All right, thank you.
November 7th.
How many did I have?
All right, I'm calling the curriculum committee meeting to order. First item, courtesy of the floor, on agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move on to discussion item 2.01, program of studies and changes for the upcoming academic year.
Good evening, I'd like to invite Mrs. Kavaki and Ms. Richards to come up and join me. As they're joining me, I just want to say, you know, last month, we came to you with some of our objectives and timeline for the program of studies. And here we are, returning after some great work done, led by both Ms. Richards and Mrs. Kavaki, as well as the leadership of our department chair individuals, and our guidance counselors, and our teachers. And so, a lot of great conversations have been had in the past month. And I'll let Mrs. Kavaki and Ms. Richards kick us off with some of the updates to the program of studies for the 26-27 school year that you will see on the agenda for the regular board meeting to be voted on at the end of the month.
Okay, welcome to our review of the 26-27 program of studies already. Feel like we just, we just did this, we're going to be starting course selection soon. We're going to walk you through the chart that's already been provided for you. We're going to be walking you through the chart that's up here for additions, changes, and deletions. For your review, we've also, as typically done, attached some of the new course descriptions that we've changed. I'm going to start with the science department. So, in the science department, we will be removing forensic organic chemistry, as this course overlaps quite a bit with our regular forensics course. We're also going to be removing genetics, due to combining portions of this curriculum into a new, modern-day biotechnology elective that we entitled Biotech: Future of Genetics. We're hoping to have this course emphasize on DNA structure, inheritance, modern gene technologies, and their applications in medicine, agriculture, forensics, and society, with a great deal of hands-on labs and technologies for use in the course. Our next department is our math department. Okay, in our math department, we're going to be removing our ALG-1A course to align with our philosophy of providing all students access to grade-level coursework and maintaining only one intervention course within our math sequence. This change also supports our ongoing efforts towards de-tracking and promoting equitable opportunities. The academic math course description and curriculum will be updated to then reflect the former Algebra 1A course. So, in other words, we will be running an Algebra 1 course and an academic math course, which will adopt the 1A SREB curriculum. The standard's geometry description will also be revised to better represent the updated course content. In addition, we're excited to introduce a new math elective, Mathematical Design in the Arts. This course is going to serve as a creative language and design tool, where students will connect geometry, algebra, calculus, and statistics through hands-on projects. Students will get to blend logic and creativity to actually view math as an art form. And lastly, fine and practical arts, we're going to be updating our course description for Woodcraft II to better reflect the processes and the skills that we teach at both high schools, to make a little bit more of a more detailed description.
Moving to business, computer science, and technology, we will be removing school store marketing in practice. Both high schools still have active school stores run by our life skills students, and we are offering internship opportunities for our students who are interested in the business and marketing fields. We are excited to offer two new AP courses for our students, AP Business and Personal Finance, which is an introductory college-level course exploring key business principles through real-world applications, and AP Cybersecurity, which examines threats, vulnerabilities, and risk management, and their impact on individuals, organizations, and society. We will be updating the course description for Launch Your Career Pre-Aprenticehip to align with the curriculum that was written for the course last year. And the course description for Junior Seminar College and Career Financial Literacy will be updated to align with the course title and reflect its primary focus on financial literacy, which now serves as a central component of the course curriculum. Moving to our ESAL department, we will be removing Introduction to Health and Fitness, as it is no longer needed due to more inclusive course options available for our English-language learners. To align with our math department changes that Tara just stated, we will be removing ESAL Algebra 1A to align with our philosophy of providing all students to grade, access to grade-level coursework and maintaining only one intervention course within our math sequence. This change also supports our ongoing efforts towards de-tracking and promoting equitable learning opportunities while containing necessary accommodations for our English acquisition students. The ESAL Academic Math Course Description and Curriculum will be updated to reflect the former ESAL Algebra 1A course. There are no changes in Social Studies, English, Physical Education, Health, and Special Education departments. In conclusion, we want to emphasize the importance of the high school course selection process, which begins in November and is guided by meaningful conversations between our students and our guidance counselors about their career pathway, post-secondary goals, and how we can best support them through their high school journey and prepare them for their future. Free sources such as videos and information packets will be shared with parents and students to support decision-making and guide conversations. We encourage everyone to look at the program of studies on the BASD website, which also showcases our unique electives. And those are our program of study updates.
I'd like to just thank Ms. Richards and Mrs. Kavaki for doing a really excellent job of bringing together a lot of different departments, different mindsets, different ideas, and bringing some cohesion to our program of studies while supporting our goals in our school district. So, thank you so much, ladies.
Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Excellent job, thank you. All right, I'd like to invite up Mr. Hendricks. Oops, sorry.
That's all right.
I'll let you leave.
We're moving on to information items on enrollment trends for, well, for the next five years at least, looking historically up to the next five years.
Okay, now I'd like to invite Mr. Hendricks up. This evening, we have a presentation for you regarding what some of the trends we're noticing in enrollment. And we are very excited to bring to you our supervisor of child accounting, who spends a lot of his time analyzing these types of trends of students coming in and out, and birth trends, etc. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mitch to explain a little bit more. Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you. So, we're going to be looking at the BASC enrollment trends from 2015 up through 2031. Obviously, anything from this point on, up to 21, sorry, up to 2031 is going to be projections. And we'll talk about that in more detail in a few minutes. Quick roadmap, we're going to look at overall themes of enrollment across the state and in the district, some considerations and external variables that we want to keep in mind as we look at all of this data, the current enrollment, some variables that go into our projections and how we make those, what those enrollment projections actually predict for the next five school years, detailed enrollment trends from 2015 up through the projections into 2031, including enrollment trends by level across the district. That will also incorporate the Pennsylvania enrollment projections, and finally, any other additional considerations to keep in mind as we move forward. So, our overall themes, first, PA public school registration has decreased across the state. That's something that everybody is seeing. Leading into theme two, BASD registration has decreased at a slower rate than the state average. We'll look at some images later on to kind of support that claim. And finally, BASD registration is projected to be stable for the next five years. A few contextual considerations to keep in mind, we're still looking at housing costs. Housing in Bethlehem is higher than the national average. Less than 2% of units are available for rent. And home prices have increased about 119% from 2015 to 2025. We also want to look at housing development. We have a lot of young families who moved in during the early 2000s, who are now starting to be not young families anymore and are not having students in our school system. New home buyers at this point in time tend to be older people and/or people without children. So, that is inhibiting the stream of school-age students moving into our community. And we still have the lingering effects of COVID-19. A lot of families shifted during the pandemic to digital school options. Economic effects of the pandemic have not completely rebounded. And unfortunately, that's not something that we're able to anticipate very well, because, as we all remember, it's unprecedented times. Looking at the projections, there are four main factors that we use to go into our projections. First is the municipal birth rates, which comes straight from the Department of Health. That's how many children are born into a given cohort that will enter kindergarten in whatever given school year within the district catchment area. We also look at enrollment rates, which are historical trends, the relationship between those municipal birth rates and how many students actually enroll with us five years later. Survivorship rates, which is also based in historical trends, which is a similar variable to enrollment rates. It's how many students end the school year with us in one grade, and then start the school year with us in the subsequent grade. And then the final variable is transiency, which comes from a lot of various sources. Specifically, we look at homeownership rates, construction projects, family dynamics, and all those other variables that contribute to local transiency. This slide is a little challenging to see, but it is our enrollment count for the 25-26 school year. On the left-hand side is the October 1st, 2024 enrollment count, just for a point of reference. And on the right-hand side is the current enrollment. The state's standard is to use October 1st, that's the statewide enrollment count day. So, anytime you look at state enrollment numbers, other districts, other charter schools, private schools, anything like that, they're all going to use October 1st for their official enrollment count. That leads us into our 26-27 projection, broken down by school and by grade. We use the October 1 enrollment count over the past several years to kind of create trends, and that informs us what we think enrollment will be for next year. Obviously, the shorter the projection period, the more accurate it's going to be. We will look at five-year enrollment trends, but the 26-27 projection is going to be our most accurate look at any individual year. These next three slides are the five-year enrollment projection by school and by grade for all of our elementary schools.
I saw, and maybe it was before that, you're about 90 kids added next year into elementary schools, I think, somewhere around that number. I didn't see it. Is there like a bubble year that you think kindergarten is going to have more kids next year? I'm just trying to figure out where, I think you were at.
For my understanding, are you looking at the 26-27 projection?
Yeah, so I see like 5,230 elementary kids currently, and then the projection for next year was up to like 5,312. So, what is that, 70?
Yeah, so, this, obviously, we can't say anything with 100% certainty until it happens. But the thought as of now is that we have a uniquely small kindergarten cohort in the 25-26 school year. So, that cohort will move through. So, rather than the bubble section, it's almost like the middle of an hourglass, where it's a little smaller than everything else.
I was just curious, my daughter is in seventh grade right now, and there was a, we were just talking about before, but superstorm sandy bubble of kids in that year. And so, I didn't know if there was something that you saw in the trends that was adding that we're going to add 80 kids next year in the garden.
I think we've talked about this before, but I would mention that the current kindergarten class, for the most part, are the babies born during the beginning of the pandemic. So, a child who was born on March 13th of 2020 would be in kindergarten right now, to give a little context.
So, there's a post-pandemic bubble, we think, maybe?
Um.
Increase?
Possibly, yeah, but I'm just giving a little context there.
Yeah. A lot of people were home with more time, and...
I get it, no. If you look at birth rates in like July of 2013, they're kind of crazy.
Yeah. So, looking at the elementary grand total, again, we are projected to be relatively stable over the next five years. There is obviously going to be some variance from year to year, but nothing that we're projecting as of now for the next five years is a huge swing. That trend is consistent into the middle and high schools. This slide is the middle schools. Again, there is some variance from year to year, because we never have two cohorts that are exactly the same. But generally speaking, we are relatively consistent over the next five years in middle school and, again, in high school. And then at the bottom of the high school page is just kind of the summary, elementary, middle, high, and total enrollment all put together in one nice spot for you. This next slide shows the enrollment trends over the past 10 years and the next five years. This next slide shows the enrollment trends over the past 10 years and the next five years. It's color-coded, so the white cells are the median for that school. Anything that is green is higher than the median, and anything that is red is lower than the median, with a darker shade being further from the median. We also highlighted the pandemic years, the current year, and the projections, so that you have that for a frame of reference as well, to understand what impact the pandemic had, and then where we shift from historical data to future projections. This slide looks at the total BASD enrollments. Obviously, we did see a pretty substantial drop going into the pandemic. There has been a decline since, but again, we are looking at enrollment to be relatively stable for the next five years. This slide shows the breakdown of elementary, middle, and high, so you can see those specifics. The interesting thing about this is that I found that there was no strong leaning of students leaving in any one particular level. It was pretty spread across all of the schools. And it's not as big of a hit-hit as we might assume when you actually look at the individual levels. And then for reference, this is the Pennsylvania enrollment trends. They do not have their 25-26 enrollment data available yet, and their projections are three years old as of now. So I did not include that, because I didn't think that it was accurate data to be examining. But going into the pandemic especially, the state did see a sharp decrease in public school enrollments, which is consistent with what the Bethlehem Area School District has seen. A few additional considerations to keep in mind are birth rate and family size. Both of those are decreasing, which gives us less potential students within the district. Increasing cost of housing and living is pushing out or pushing away a lot of the potential new enrollments. And Bethlehem development plans, the city recently announced Gateway on Fourth and a Pembroke project, which I'll talk about in a minute, that we do believe will increase enrollment in our schools. But until some of those more specific data points are available, we have not incorporated them into the projections, because we don't want to incorporate them and then have them be inaccurate. So looking at those two projects, Gateway on Fourth and Pembroke, Gateway on Fourth is going to be located across from the industrial park in South Bethlehem, where daily ab splits from Fourth Street. As the current catchment stands, those students would go to Donegan or Freemansburg, and then Braggel or East Hills and Freedom. They are tentatively planning 120 units over two phases, with construction starting at the end of 2026. Leasing would be available starting for fall of 2028, which would impact our 28-29 school year. This is a completely new project, so it's not replacing any existing units. And their idea as of now is that it's going to be about 2/3 affordable housing and 1/3 at-market value, mostly apartment-style. For Pembroke, this is located in the Pembroke neighborhood between Pembroke Road and Stephco Boulevard. It's a community that already exists, and they are going to be tearing down the units there and renovating them. The current catchment area is Marvine and Lincoln, and then Northeast and Liberty. Their plan is to increase from 196 to 456 units in five phases over five to seven or 10 to 15 years. That's all going to be dependent on federal funding. As we know, everything is sort of up in the air with that right now. And they're looking at doing approximately 60 to 80 units per year. Construction is going to start in two to three years at the earliest, so it's going to be several years before we really see this impact. Following the completion of the project, there's going to be at least 196 affordable housing units, which is what they already have, and at least 100 units at market rate. There's also going to be units that are specifically designated for senior citizens, so that will not impact our student enrollment in specifically those two buildings that they're looking at for senior citizens. And it's going to be a mix of apartment and townhome style. That was all that I had, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Oh, Mr. Faschino.
Okay, just in terms of other data that you're mixing in, because we all know that population is a complex issue. Are we also looking at job trends as defined by the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, or any other, you know, economic development things, because jobs also increase populations?
Job trends specifically in and of themselves are not something that I use to incorporate, but the effects of job trends are. So those drive transiency rates. It also affects the housing market. As, you know, a new warehouse opens, a lot of more people want to move in. So housing rates spike because supply and demand. So those are things that we consider, but we don't necessarily track like, oh, this warehouse is going to open, therefore we think this many more students are going to come in.
Oh, I understand. It's a reflection.
Yeah.
Then the other, only other question that I have is, with job creation, we're also talking about some more socio-anthropological. Maybe this is more of a question for Dr. Shifley. But we're looking at trends of people or certain generations waiting to have children when they're older. Is that also part of the data streams that you're looking at with regard to the kinds of populations that we have now moving into the Lehigh Valley? They may not be having children until later.
Yeah, so there was a relatively large housing boom in Bethlehem in the early 2000s. A lot of families moved into the area, young families, who are now, like I said, aging up, not necessarily having more children, not contributing more students into the school system. And a lot of the families who are moving in are older families who are not contributing students, or families who do not have any children. So that definitely is a consideration. But as, for lack of better phrasing, as the people who moved in in the early 2000s are no longer able to be in a self-sufficient home, and those homes become available, there will likely be an influx of younger families and that sort of cyclical relationship. And maybe younger families isn't the word, but the groups of families that are more inclined to bring students into our school system.
In some ways, Pennsylvania's attractiveness of the housing market, especially with Bethlehem being a very attractive housing market, the average age of a first-time of a home buyer has gone up dramatically. In 1990, I read somewhere in 1991, the average age of a home buyer was 31 years old. Two years ago, the average age of a home buyer was 46 years old. That means there's all those years where they're not having children, they're not likely to have school-aged children. And I think that can, as well as COVID, contributes to the decline over the years.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. I appreciate it. It's been a long time since we've actually looked at enrollment trends like this, and it's a really good snapshot. And what hits me when I was looking at this over the weekend, while we're kind of projecting flat in the next five years, we're not projecting flat across the board. We see some of our elementary schools where we see some significant growth, buildings that are already very full, and then we see some that are not so full that actually get smaller. And I know this is the first step in a multi-week and multi-month kind of conversation about our budgets and our strategic planning and how we address that going forward. But I think part of this is possibly looking at some sort of elementary redistricting or figuring out how to better allocate resources. I don't want to increase class sizes, and I certainly don't want to get rid of, put more on teachers who are already dealing with more and more students with learning support needs and emotional support needs and all the trauma and everything we see. But I think at some point, we have to look at, you know, we have a school, and I use Governor Wolf and Spring Garden as example, that are really bursting at the seams, and there's no space. And they're big buildings, and the teachers are really overstressed there with some of the class sizes. And then we have other schools that are getting smaller. I think we have to look at shifting around our buildings and make sure that our facilities are serving the most students that they can in the best way possible, so we have extra space for resource rooms, for emotional support rooms, for future growth and things. So I think, while it's important to look at things that are flat, there's definitely areas that I think we have to kind of target going forward. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's kind of what I see on the elementary level, that we need to do some kind of look down the road.
Can I, I'm sorry, before you go, Mr. Rishidi, Mike, do you mean redistricting or like changing certain classroom, I mean, homeschools? Are you looking at something like that?
I mean, changing the catchment areas for elementary schools.
Sagan?
Changing the catchment areas for elementary schools. So the neighborhoods or the areas that go to a certain school may shift to make more room at a crowded school and put some of those kids in schools where there's more space.
Understood. Thank you.
Kind of balance things out.
I agree with Mr. Faschino on that. I think we have to explore a lot of options with that. I mean, I think we can explore redistricting, potentially consolidation of some schools, clustering, which I know we haven't done here in Bethlehem. And I actually did a little research on this. I think like 1982 is the last time that we actually did a really big thing with the schools, where we shifted sixth grade to middle school, and then ninth grade to high school. And then '91, we did the pretty big redistricting. That was the result of a lawsuit settlement. And that's, I was a freshman, and the Hanover Township went to Liberty at that point, and half of South Bethlehem ended up going to Freedom, and then some middle school shifts. So I think we have to have that conversation. I mean, I just think from a budget perspective, we do. I had a couple of questions on here. So you focus mostly on birth rates and trends that way.
Mm-hmm.
We're also losing some kids to charter schools, correct?
Yeah.
To prokeal schools. I think, I just read recently that I think the Allentown Diocese is over 9,000 students right now, which is the highest they've had in probably like 15 years, something like that. I just saw like Scranton Arch Diocese had like 4,500 kids increase in the last 15 years. So I think it's some of that is, we have to look at, why are we losing kids that way, too? I mean, when you looked at some of these numbers, we have kids in middle school. Those kids are just leaving. They're not, they're not going to a different school. They're just losing kids from last year to this year. And why is that? I don't know. I mean, I think that's something that should be part of the conversation. And then I just had one thing. We've seen data like this before a little bit, since I've been on the board. One of the things I liked, and we don't have it in here, maybe we can get that. They used to give us what percentage of the school is full, or the, we don't have that. I was wondering if maybe you could add that to one of these slides and send it out. Sorry. Send the facilities? Okay. I must have missed it there. Nope.
Why don't you go ahead?
Well, I think it's a great thing to raise is look at what these numbers look like relative to the facilities that we have, that the kids are in. But I, and just to, again, I'm assuming this will be another sort of month-long, week-long conversation, that that's almost like a strategic planning step in itself. Because in all the ways that you could potentially quantify and calculate projections to guess how many kids are going where, not guess, but estimate the, you know, what things are looking like five years in advance to, there, we could come up with so many different numbers that would say, well, this building has capacity for this many kids. And there are zillions of different ways to measure that. And it's sort of another strategic planning process on our part to say, well, you know, truly, we're not just talking kid per square foot, like there are certain things we want to make sure, whether it's size of classes or it's resources available in the school to support learning. But I think it would be, to your point, really helpful for us to have conversations of, well, how do we in the Bethlehem, knowing that the state might give us this number, and, you know, the other, you know, other facility-related guidance might give us these six other numbers? Like, how do we, as Bethlehem Area School District, want to think about the space we have at this building for this many kids, and look at that relative to these? Because I agree, it's to maximize the space that we have and to recognize what space is getting used or not used. Those would be really helpful, you know, to combine it with these numbers.
Mrs. Patrick. First of all, in my 14 years on the board, I have never seen a presentation about this as comprehensive as you have done. So thank you, because obviously, you have taken a lot of information and put this all together, so I appreciate this. One thing I'm finding very interested, that I'm interested in, is being a Hanover, former Hanover parent, that used to be the place that everyone opened enrolled. And to see their numbers go down like that makes me wonder, how much lower are they really going without open enrolled students there?
I think part of that is a byproduct of actually our efforts with open enrollment. You're right, Hanover has been one of the hotspots for open enrollment. Since I've stepped into the position, I've tried to make an effort to take open enrollment applications under more careful consideration and understand the why of that application, that request. There are people who request open enrollment for reasons that benefit, reasons that don't benefit the student in the long term. And so we're trying to kind of filter out some of those open enrollments. So some of the drop that you see in Hanover would likely be a result of that effort, because there are fewer students at Hanover open enrolled.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. I just want to piggyback off of what Mr. Rishidi said about losing our kids from, to charter schools and private schools and so forth. And we, yeah, and we really need to investigate that further, because I've read lots of articles about parent choice, and why is it that, why is it that parents are actually taking their kids out of public schools? And so that's a huge topic that we need to discuss. And so I just wanted to, you know, mention that as well.
Yeah. It's still a work in progress. We want to make sure that everything is really of the best quality before it goes out to the public, but we are in the process of discussing some of those variables and how we can, rather than speculate, oh, students are leaving for this reason, students are leaving for that reason, really work with those families to understand why they're leaving and what we can do to show them all of the great things that Bethlehem has to offer.
And again, there, you know, there is lots of information about why parents are taking their kids out of public schools. Again, parent choice, because again, some of them are really disgruntled. And I think it all happened after, you know, during the pandemic, when they were home and so forth. And so that played a huge factor in why parents, and it's even more, it's been happening for the longest, but it's just that we've been seeing it even more.
Yeah, just one more comment before people panic, because I said the R-word when it comes to redistricting. That's not a next-year thing. That is a multi-year plan that would take a committee in place to research it, to bring data, analyze our facility plans with Mr. Fazil and his team, to see where we're going. Like, that is not something I would envision for several years into the future as we deal with budgets, because we have to get through Fountain Hill, and then what's next after Fountain Hill, and where are we going? But that's part of a long-term strategic plan to kind of rebalance things. So in no way do I expect to see that in next, you know, for September or August.
No worries, Mr. President.
I know, but you never know.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much. Oh, did you?
I want to thank Mitchell for doing all the homework and concisely putting it together. When I gave him the challenge, I could, he threw himself into it with the typical zeal and quest for accuracy. So thank you. He presented to our executive cabinet as we're continuing to look at a lot of these issues. But you're right, Mrs. Patrick, I think for a while there, we haven't had the firm foundation of where the numbers are telling us. So in terms of enrollment, we have that piece now in the binder, ready to go. There are many factors that affect an overall budget beyond enrollment and potential redistricting. There's a number of buildings, but then most, the biggest cost of us is our total number of staff. So as, if we're looking at business, if we're looking at budgets overall, that's going to be many chapters in that book to be able to get to that level of sustainability. But it should start with the old maxim, the school has this many customers or clients that are enrolled. That determines how much space it needs, how many teachers it needs, and what we do with them. So for the first step, Mitch, thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to agenda items for the November 17 regular board meeting. 4.01, the program of studies changes for the 26-27 school year. We already discussed. 4.02, donation from H.B. Hunt Adopt-A-Class.
Yes, so we have four teachers, one from ESA, one from Clearview, and two from Spring Garden, who applied for this grant from J.B. Hunt. They have been awarded $1,000 gift card for classroom supplies and a couple other items for their classroom.
Questions? All right. And then moving to 4.03, dental services agreement.
So we have a new dental service provider, and the, we're proud to offer dental services to our students who need it. I can't imagine trying to learn with significant tooth pain. And so this is our agreement with Lehigh Valley Hospital for $4 per dental exam. And so this is our agreement with Lehigh Valley Hospital for $4 per dental exam and $6 per hour of other services.
Questions? Yeah.
Where's the service provided?
At the school.
Thank you.
I believe there's a van.
$4 and now it hasn't changed in many years.
I, I will say that even though there are dental clinics at the Fowler Center in the South Side, North Hampton Community College and other resources available, parking at North Hampton is a challenge for families who can't afford the dental fees, they can't afford the parking, right, either. So there are so many nickel and dime issues that are, are most, it's so wonderful that this is there not only for the parking issue, but the accessibility of time. So parents don't have to take time off work to get their kids out of class and into these things. The reason why I was asking about the, the location is advanced dental work can't be done in a van. So that, I'm assuming that if there's more capping or more needs that they can follow up in another.
It would be a referral, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? All right, so we're moving on to courtesy of the floor for any item, Mr. Antalix.
Stephen Antalix, 70,70. Slide mentioned quite a bit about housing and a shortage of, and this becomes a shock to many of you, but the housing problem Bethlehem was created by the city of Bethlehem. And it didn't start overnight. It started in the 50s after World War II. Why? Bethlehem Steel and Lehigh needed to expand. And what was in their way? Single-family homes. Take Carlton, Montclair, Berkel, Fillmore, Fifth, Hillside, occupied by immigrants from Europe. And each single family had probably three to five kids. So what was in the way of the Steel and Lehigh in expanding these single-family homes? And what did they do? The gentleman in charge of Redevelopment Authority of Bethlehem retired. And whom did they appoint? The new director was a dean at Lehigh University. And his associate dean was a vice president Bethlehem Steel. Come on. I mean, you put the fox in charge of the hen house. And who else, and how else did the city implement that plan? Bethlehem is the only city in the state of Pennsylvania, which is a college town, which calls five students a family. All others, it's three, two to three. And any land developer cannot make money on two to three students, but he makes money with five. So he bid everybody to buy, buy those houses and converted them to student housing, which now cannot be converted back to single-family homes. So if those homes existed today, there would be no housing problem. So just take it for what it's worth. Okay, thank you.
Any others?
Thank you for that history lesson, Mr. Antalix, about the lost neighborhood of South Bethlehem. That's to what you're referring. That included my aunt and uncle's house. So thank you for that history lesson.
There are actually two lost neighborhoods. There's North Hampton Heights and the one in South Bethlehem.
All right, moving on to open forum. Any items for board members? All right, motion to adjourn? Two minutes. And then we move on to facilities meeting. Feel good? All right. Welcome, everyone, to this evening's Facility Committee meeting. We're going to start with courtesy of the floor about any of our agenda items. All right, that brings us to discussion items. We got 2.01, the capital improvement plan.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So this is our annual foray into the facility conditions and plans to keep our facilities as excellent as they are. So, okay, so just some review slides. These look familiar over the years, but our capital plan is a district-wide plan that identifies all of our infrastructure and what requires upkeep. It establishes priorities among millions and, millions and millions of dollars of projects that we could do had we had a limitless supply of funds. And we prioritize those as, as the conditions and the operations require. It's a living document. It reflects our current conditions day by day. So things pop up, we add it to the capital plan so we don't forget about it at this time of year to be able to incorporate those, those needed repairs. So just reviewing from last year, what we, what we talked about. So the 2024 capital plan highlighted the projects that we executed this past summer that we've been, you know, reviewing progress on. And then this plan, this year, 2025 capital plan is projecting what we hope to accomplish next summer. Now, there's also other larger-scale, major capital construction and renovation projects in the hopper. Right now, we're onsite in Fountain Hill building the school. That's a separate pot of money. That's a different type of project we're talking about tonight. Tonight is more the, looking at what is required, both on the big picture and smaller maintenance-sized projects. But we're going to recommend the more, the medium-sized projects out of our capital reserve fund for, for next summer's execution. That investment in capital projects, the board has been fantastic in supporting us over the years to do that. The reason our facilities are in the condition they are is, you know, the, the boards before us invested in our facility. So we are in a good place today because of that. We just have to maintain it and keep it there. And every year, we, we create a draft five-year plan because the finances are, you know, so unreliable, but we don't want to bank on it every year. We just see what's, what's available. We have a plan and we see how far that plan gets year to year and we make adjustments and as priorities change. So all of that in the big scheme and context moving ahead is that I feel like the president at the State of the Union event, the address. The state of our facility is as strong, right? We're good. Our, our facility is in good condition, but we have to do the work and the investment to keep them that way. And that's the discussion tonight. Beyond the maintenance, the, you know, the, the capital reserve kind of upkeep projects, there are a lot of projects that have been on our horizon for many years. You know, the Fountain Hill project was on our radar for over 18 years before we pulled the trigger and moved ahead with a known need. So in that same vein, we have other larger capital needs, longer term, that we know about and we have to come up with a solution for. And that's part of the, the conversation today with the Freedom High School, East Hills Middle School, William Penn Elementary, TJ Elementary, the Ed Center, this building right here. So all of those are on the large scale. And then the other wrinkle moving ahead, and this, we're starting to see this in the, on the maintenance side, is that if you go back 25 years from now, or from today, to the late 90s, early 2000s, what happened then? We were building a lot of new buildings. So to the extent that we've invested, made great investments in our facilities over the last four, five years with the COVID dollars, we got to renovate nine elementary schools with HVAC systems. That's a wonderful investment. It's going to serve our district well into the future. The Donegan, Lincoln, Marvine, Clearview, those were built and/or renovated in, you know, 25, 27 years ago. So we're starting to see a lot of those systems start to give up the ghost. So hot water heaters, HVAC systems that are coming of age and will require additional attention. So not that there's a, year by year, we, we fund a single project and it solves our problems for a year. There's a lot of competing priorities and demands for those limited resources to address all of our facilities' needs.
If I could add, Mark, just some commentary on that. The other kudos to the district is, if you think about the environmental, so right now, Mark, you know, as, as we well know, asbestos in our buildings is almost none. So these are some unbelievable strides that we've made over the last 25 years. Some districts are still struggling with things like that in their buildings. So we have very limited, if any, remaining and it's very well documented and managed. So that's a big item, as well as, you know, how we've maintained and upgraded our athletic facilities over the years as well and our sites as well. So when we talk about buildings, you know, one of the things we have is such a huge asset, not just in buildings, but the sites themselves. And so I just wanted to remind us of that. But the environmental is a big kudo to have that is off of our radar forever.
Okay, well, how much should we invest in our facilities? Well, if I had any say, I think it's about 176 million that we could use right about now, but that is not a reality in, in the public environment. So we, we've used this as kind of a, an anchor to say, let's, APPA, the Association of Physical Plan Association, our administrators, these are the college facility folks, like, you know, this is the, the big boys with the billion-dollar endowments. We don't have that in, in public education. But, you know, based on the statistics they collect and their data says, hey, we should, for this lifecycle renewal, this is the, the capital reserve project, one and a half to 2% of your current replacement value of your asset. So if we were to calculate our renewal value at the cost of 300 bucks a square foot to renovate every square foot in the district, at one and a half percent of that would be an annual investment of over $8 million a year. Now, that's a pretty tall order in our, in our school district budget. We've been aiming for 2 million a year. So based on the investments going back 30 years ago that were made, that were still in good condition. And as that 2 million a year was hard to reach going back a decade or so, in the last five years, you'll see a graph coming up here that we're, we're hitting that 2 million. It's not 8 million. I mean, it was with the COVID dollars, but we're, we're working hard to preserve the life of all the existing assets and infrastructure we have with the limited resources that are provided.
One more commentary, since I gave a good one. 2 million today doesn't buy you as much as it did five years ago. So there is a note on the bottom, which Mark is hesitant to point out, but I will point it out. It probably needs to be increased, not to 8 million, but 2 million doesn't get you, as you all know anymore, what we think 2 million should get you.
Good point. Okay, looking back over time, here is, you know, the last 30 years of facilities investment. And you can see kind of the, the, the seasons of our, of our, of our investment. You know, go back to the 90s, early 2000s, that was the, the big renovation, the big push of elementary schools, those that are living off the bond years. So borrowing money for big projects and using that, those funds to do many, many small projects around the district in addition to those large projects. We had some lean years in the middle there where it was tougher to hit that, that green line there as our $2 million, like just let's get that far. You can see it was, we, we weren't keeping up with that for a little span in there. But, you know, as we got into the pandemic and things looking better, we were, as a board, you know, supporting the investment of additional capital funds. And then we had the COVID money spike there. And, you know, the last, gosh, eight years, we've been hitting that $2 million target. So that's, that's really a good thing for our district. Not that it was eight, but, you know, to get that investment is, is well, well-served within our facilities. Looking back over the last summer, we've been talking about these projects as we, as we went. Very recently, we had our, our grand opening of the auditorium here, the new school year. So that was a huge improvement with big impact for our, our freedom community. We did some of those behind-the-scenes, you know, investments in hot water heaters at Liberty and Marvine. We replaced a Governor Wolf roof. Huge, huge relief to have that fixed and repaired and behind us from the, the trouble we were having with that in the past. That was, I heard that Rick, yeah. Rick lived through the dark days of, of that project coming to life. We also received a $750,000 school facility improvement grant towards that project. So that was a, a huge help for the, for our effort last year, some grease trap and some clock intercom replacements. So we're going to, as we look to the future, look at ways to So we're going to, as we look to the future, look at ways to continue a lot of those smaller, important, widespread projects throughout the, as many corners of the district we can Just relive some of the photographs from the auditorium. Sure.
When you go through, do you do an evaluation of why you're, sorry, my son is calling. Yes, I call him Guber. Like, why the budget versus what the final costs were? I mean, they were, for the most part, pretty, pretty close, not taking into consideration the grant, obviously, but like some were pretty close and some were off. Like, do you take that into consideration for this next round? And were there any findings that you were like, oh, wow?
Yes and no. Yes, we do fact that in. So the project budget includes all the fees and contingencies that go along. So there's, there's contingency funds, like 20% contingency because we don't know what we don't know. Sometimes the bids come in a little hot, so we dip into that contingency to make the award. Sometimes they come in really low and that, those funds are available for, you know, future projects. So what we, so, you know, from last year, you know, you figure the, the budget of four and a half million, you, we award at much lower a lot of those projects. We don't spend the contingency if we don't need to. That just goes back to the pot for Harry to manage as we go ahead. So, you know, the, you know, fees for, you know, permitting for the CHA presence onsite, that's a little increase over that. But we're, based on our budgets from last year and our execution on the projects, we're well over a million in savings from what we planned. So, and we'll talk about in a few minutes that, you know, some of those budgets, a lot of them do hit the number or come in under the number. Sometimes they don't. So on the whole, over time, I think we're pretty good at budgeting conservatively and then coming in under the number.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add to that is over the years, we've done very well, but it's, it's a very early budgeting when we're just preparing the capital plan. Once you get into design and you actually get into all of the details, what you see out there and put the pieces together, generally, I think we're fairly successful in coming below the budget. There've been very few, and I think a lot of that is attributed to Bill's efforts who's sitting to the right, as well as Mark and everybody managing it. There's so many other variables, you know, Director Schenkel, they come into play, sort of the timing of the contractors available, the type of project it is, sometimes you don't have interest in it. So there's so many variables, but generally speaking, I think if you go over the years, and we have a compendium of the projects for every year, for the most part, we've done very well in terms of hitting the, the target budgets that the board has approved. But there's a bit of a, there's no science behind it, so the evaluation gets tricky. It's more of an art and a little bit of good guestimating, to be honest with you. Yep.
Just some photos here of the great work that happened over at Freedom. Huge improvement, very much welcomed and appreciated on the Freedom side of town for the, the school auditorium there. That's our roof at Governor Wolf. So, you know, the fun and dirty stuff in the heat of August with long sleeves and long pants and 400 degree asphalt, making that work to the final product of a nice new roof. Sexy boiler room photos, right? Got to use these, you know? That's our hot water heater replacements that we're buying. Someone has to appreciate this stuff here. Okay, so bringing that back to, okay, let's look at the big picture of the condition of our facilities and, and using the, the capital planning tool we have here for the last 30 years or longer, we, we look at, you know, the, the value of our buildings compared to what would it cost to implement all the recommended improvements we'd come up with? That's that $170 million number if we had today, we'd go and do it all. So when you look at the, all the, all the renovations necessary for a building compared to the total value of that building, you go over the percentage. So that, that improvement cost as a percent of renovation, looking at, this is the, do we replace the transmission in our car or do we get a new car? And we use that, that 60% metric as sort of a bellwether to be like, all right, we're getting about to that point, we should start thinking about a full replacement versus a, a renovation. So if you, I mean, well-known, we've talked about these for, for many years, but if you run down that column five, right down the middle, you see that list of percentages and the big numbers that jump out at us that require attention. That's at, you know, William Penn and TJ. You look at East Hills at 37%, Freedom 57, the Lab Center at Liberty at, you know, 47, and then the Ed Center at 75. So those are the buildings where, okay, long-term, we need to be thinking, how do we address those concerns through renovation projects and keep that number as low as possible, keep the building functional? Or do we get to a point where it's like, oh, no, it's time for a new car versus continuing to fix our car? So big picture, planning and facility and financial realities that we're grappling with every year and now looking ahead into the future, we've known about those big picture priorities for a long time. The TJ, the Freedom, William Penn, East Hills, Ed Center. Those are, they're on, they're on the list. And we'll actually put some more numbers to those we hadn't yet put numbers to in years past. Fountain Hill was on that list, and here we are today, you know, we're a year and a half from opening that new school for the Fountain Hill community. We touched on the current facility condition starting to add pressure. So those 25-year-old buildings we haven't really thought much about last 25 years are starting to come of age and become more of a concern. That's, that's adding pressure where we didn't really feel it too much in the past. We just heard from Mitch talking about our enrollment summary, our projections, and what that means based on our current budget realities, that I'm not going to get the $176 million, I know that, but how do we navigate the declining enrollments, increased cost of construction, limited funds available to execute those projects? And what does that solution look like long-term for our future planning efforts? We have borrowed funds for Fountain Hill. We're underway, making strides with that. We've also borrowed for the Votec project. So that's coming together to have that factory building. They're working to have that ready for kids in August for the next school year. So that's, that's great work. But bottom line, in the short, the next five years, the challenge is we need to come up with a solution for those bigger projects. The solution might be, there's no solution, or we're going to think something else or something different. But between Freedom, East Hills, William Penn, TJ, and a lesser extent, the Ed Center, how do we tackle those bigger projects? How do we get there with the added pressure continuing from every, all the other buildings still beginning to, continuing to age? So that, there's a lot in that bullet of what the future holds, and we're going to unpack that in the coming weeks and months as we go through the budget process. But that's what makes it tough and why you guys get paid the big bucks as a school board, right?
Well, speaking of bucks, the one thing I do wanted to add as a positive, in 2022, there was an opportunity to submit what's called a capital budget itemization request under the RACP process. And we were, again, forward-thinking with the way we enacted these. So for William Penn, TJ, Freedom, and East Hills, we have specific line item, itemizations already in the capital budget for those projects under RACP. So we took the initiative. We had done the same for Fountain Hill, and if you recall, for Fountain Hill, so far, we received 1.5 million, and we've applied again. The last, the, the opening was about two months ago. We did apply again, and we're sitting tight waiting if we get more. One of the beautiful things about the RACP process, these projects are perfectly suited for, is that time is on our side and that helps because those itemizations are good for 10 years. So that's important. We also got our own itemization. We set the standard for how, for RACP in, for school projects. So that was phenomenal because PlanCon is dead right now, or not alive, let's say. Anyway, both, I guess it means the same thing. But anyway, the, the other thing I wanted to point out with that is this, we have an opportunity right now that closes November 14th, and we are submitting, I spoke to Jack and Mark, we are submitting a general capital budget itemization to perhaps cover anything else that might not be William Penn, TJ, Freedom, and East Hills. Because once you have a capital budget itemization, it's specific to that. So we're going to do a general one for BASD facilities that'll allow perhaps an Ed Center and other situations. So that's a positive. The other positive we've really done very well on is how we phased projects in terms of our planning and thought through process. Fountain Hill was a perfect example, again, of how we were able to find an opportunity to properly phase that project. So one of the challenges we'll have is there will be a decision point that we had talked about whether or not we want to use the existing temporary school for anything else related to those. So that's another decision point that's almost about a year away, I think, close to, almost month away? Month or two away in terms of whether we want to consider that. It was a year away when we talked about it, right? Yeah, now we're coming up to it. We don't have to make a decision, but it, it is a decision point not to make the decision, but then that opportunity might not be there for a temporary facility in terms of how you do it, whether, you know, a simple example would be, let's just talk about East Hills. To do that and really get the best bang for your buck, maybe moving a grade center out might be the right solution to allow moving over there. Freedom could be the same type of thing if we're doing a mechanical, heavy-duty project that way, because it can't just be done over a summer like we did the elementary schools. Because if I tell Mark and Bill, we got to do it over summer, I think you're both going to say no. So, so those are the, that's another commentary I just wanted to add to this slide.
Thank you, Reeve. This is our, kind of the, the summary, one of the tabs in our capital plan where we look at, you know, there's, there's three parts of this. At the top, the top few lines are those, those big ones we know about. So Fountain Hill's up there, 62 million, underway, check. Beneath that, we have TJ, William Penn. We have numbers attached to replace each of those buildings, 43 million each. Got it? We hadn't put numbers in for Freedom, East Hills, or the Ed Center. And we still haven't put the Ed Center in there yet, but we did lean forward and, and put a number on Freedom, coming at a cool 58 million to, to address the 1968 original 285,000 square foot facility.
Well, Bill and I would just collaborate. East Hills, I think, is a little long yet. We have to fix that.
Oh, okay. Okay. We've, we've a number for, for East Hills, and that might be a little bit inaccurate at this point, so there's a number there, we'll adjust that. But they're, they're out over the horizon, they need a solution. How do we get there? We'll have to work through that in the coming, you know, weeks, months, and years to come up with that plan. The next chunk in the middle is like the GOB stuff. That's the, you know, mechanical, electrical, flooring, paving, asbestos, masonry, and kind of the, the ongoing maintenance. We shoot for a number every year in the budget. We've not had that number in our budget for many, many years. We usually give that back to the team in terms of, hey, let's get across the budget line. So that, that chunk of budget has been hanging around, say, $350,000 the last several years. And then the bottom half of this is, you know, just the highest priority projects that we have, and we've cast them out five years. So in that column there for 2026, there's a list of projects, and we'll review these in a, in a slide or two in, in detail. But there's, you know, 2.1 million there that we could tackle. There's also another, you know, two-plus million per year, the next five years, based on known requirements with, you know, building vacancies and tackling certain projects at certain times in their lifecycle. So we want to hold to those as best we can, but we also have other priorities that pop up every year that tend to kick these down the road every, every chance we get. So that's our effort to, you know, put a, put a plan and stick to it as best we can and cast it out a few years. And we'll explore these in a, in a few moments. This is a slide that we, we saw when planning Fountain Hill project. This is the, the temporary space that becomes available when the kids who move from Fountain Hill up to Hanover Township in an office park right now, being dutifully served for the Fountain Hill Elementary School students. When they're done and they move back to their new school, we have provisions in the lease as it stands to extend that for a time based on other needs. So over two years ago, when we concocted this scheme, we thought this date would never get here. And here we are now on the cusp of, you know, that, you know, a decision to do something that requires some planning. We're now at that point in the next couple of months to say, yep, we can, can we use it? Or maybe we can't use it, but maybe we still can. We don't know. But that decision point is upon us here in the coming month or so to pull something together and use that space. Just highlighting the, the option available as we do the calculus to, to solve this, this There's a, a blow-up of those projects. So, you know, priorities that have bubbled up over the last year and have been on the list for, for many years, but this is, in total, 2.3 million worth of projects, and we, we, we got to our $2 million target by taking some of those smaller projects out into the GOB. But the top, top half of the, of the slide is looking at the, some of the, the needed projects at Freedom. The HVAC unit that manages humidity in the pool, that's an important thing to keep that pool alive. That's, that's on its last legs. The fire alarm panel there gives us fits every now and then. I'd much prefer to have a reliable and not have to worry about this. So that's on our list. There are a couple of roof areas we didn't get to at Liberty over the last five years of our roofing efforts that still need attention and we can knock out for $100,000 or so. If you didn't know, we, we parked the district vehicles behind the maintenance building out of sight, but the road on which we parked them, I think road is probably a generous description of what it is right now. It's more a moonscape that is dangerous to navigate. So we want to fix that while, before it becomes, someone gets hurt back there. Another hot water heater going back 30 years, that, that spring guard that needs attention. The, the stadium turf is outside its warranty. We're in the window where we expected to have to deal with this going back 10 years ago, based on the condition and the, the fiber breakage we're seeing on the, on the field. We're hoping to get another year or two out of this, at least a year, bringing in some folks to look at it. We think it's time to, to do it now, student safety in mind. There's some other paving challenges and, and space needs up at Transportation. There are a lot more drivers and monitors and now van drivers and a lot more people than we have space. So a little paving work can help free up some space for our, our transportation staff. Over the last several years, we've had a lot of demand from our principals, like, hey, when we, when we put our access control in, the card swipe, the card readers at all of our doors, well, they weren't at all of our doors, they were at one, two, three doors per building. And as the use of the buildings have changed over time and how we bring in parents and how we operate, there's been a continual request for, we need more doors here, or how about this door over there? So we've done onesy twosy over the years, but to the point now where we need a lot of them. So it's, it's beyond what my guys can handle one, one by one. So going to target needs across the district for additional card readers and security needs around, for our school access. And then we talked about the budgets earlier. So we had approved last year a project for the, the Field House of the Freedom Turf. We had half a million budgeted in a past year to do that, went through land development, design bid, open bids. We had a very competitive process. We had nine contractors look at it. We got five bids within $50,000 of each other, but that number is 716,000 versus 500,000. So we picked up that budget overage in the budget for next year, just to account for that. We looked at We looked at ways, you know, do we have to, you know, re-scrap this, reject it and rebid, but looking at how we, how we could save on what we need there. It felt like there were no options that would save us more than pennies on the dollar that would then last. So we took the approach of, you know what, here we are, what we designed is a durable masonry structure that will last the abuse of the kids and the operators in the building versus a, you know, wooden frame with metal siding that I think would not last as, wouldn't be as durable as what we have designed. So doing that calculus and recommending tonight that we pursue, you know, budget the extra funds and pursue that completion of that project. So we picked up those in the capital reserve budget. Other projects, smaller, also widespread, that we can handle out of our GOB anticipating next year, you know, managing moisture issues at Farmersville. We put a new HVAC system in the building to prevent any of the four letter words from coming to the board's attention. However, we've, we've uncovered an issue with the, the construction of the building and the building envelope that our system is not able to keep up yet. So we need to seal that split phase block around one of the, the gym and the classroom, the 300 wing in the building to help ensure that we maintain humidity control in our building there. We were able to save the generator out of Fountain Hill when we knocked the building down, so the generator and switch in decent shape. We do not have one at Transportation, so we'd like to repurpose that. So if there's a power outage or extended need, we can dispense fuel and provide services. So we can relocate that and reuse that for our transportation building. Similar to the access control, we've also had lots of requests from principals about their flooring. Go back to those Lincoln, Marvine, Clearview, Donegan, did not get the renovations over the last five years. Those carpets from 1998 and 2002 are tired. And, you know, we can do one here, one there, but to do all of them that have built up, we're going to, we want to knock out as much of that as we can. Classrooms, we still have carpet that we can convert to vinyl composite tile. I'm a huge fan of hard surface school classrooms as the, the best, safest way to, to, to maintain. We still have carpets a lot all over the place. We want to try to convert those over and tackle some of those carpet needs. And if I can keep this up every year, we need to start checking off those intercom clock systems. I was at a building this morning and we're still an hour behind because you have to go and adjust it for daylight savings in 2025 still. But they're all of that same vintage, 25 plus years old, and it's getting tougher to find parts and we're cobbling together those intercoms. So we are hoping to keep one, one a year at least to keep marching through the district. So ASAPACR is next with the biggest need. So those are the, again, with, with, with $2 million to invest, we wanted to do as many projects, as many small projects, as far flung across the district as we could to try to spread that love as best we can. So that was the approach. If we had more, we could tackle a, a elementary roof, but not in the cards at the moment. We'd love to invest that 4 million bucks per building at TJ William Penn. That would be, you know, check those off the, off the list. Funds aren't there. So looking at how to best deploy the funds, going the, the many small, far flung approach this year to try and, you know, inject those funds throughout the district. So in addition, one more slide before you.
Oh.
Sorry, just wanted to, we also received the school facility grant money towards a larger project at the lab center. Now, that's a $13 million project. We were hoping to get to 5 million. We got 400,000. That's not really enough to motivate us to spend 13 million. However, we are right now pursuing a scope revision to say, well, part of that 13 million dollars was a chiller replacement that we still really need. So we can, we're working to get approval to modify that scope, do a chiller replacement, apply that 400,000 towards it, similar to what we do with the roof at Governor Wolf. So that's on deck for next year. And that's just the other projects, you know, that are in the queue for, for next year as well currently. That will change tomorrow, a week from now, a month from now, that will be different. But that, that lab center facility improvement grant, that's a target to get that one rolling next summer, or the, the summer after next.
Yeah, no, all I was going to say is please don't suggest any changes to that list because they've changed it about five times. I was saying five, okay, three times. So it's a lot of thoughts been put into that list by Mark and Bill and everyone. So it was just a request.
So as we worked through this, really, and this has been a challenge since I've been here, you know, how, how do we sustain funding for these needed projects? We've been living the budgetary commitment and the pay as you go model. So what we don't spend every year, we, we budget, we plan, it's a, it's a $350, $15 million budget. You know, there's a couple bucks left at the end, we're putting that back into our facility. So we appreciate using that. It's one time funds, it disappears once you spend it, but it's gotten us this far. So we're going to continue pursuing that. Reeve touched on the grant support, so we have those line item authorizations and then we just apply as the opportunities present themselves. There's some serious dollars there. It's 12 million for Freedom, 10 million for East Hills, 7 million TJ, 7 million William Penn. So there's money allocated that we can leverage, we're pursuing at Fountain Hill. So we can use that, those grant funds to offset or prevent, you know, board dollars from going towards it. That's a, that's a great win. And then the debt, obviously. So we already have our toe in the water with VOTEC, with Fountain Hill, so those funds are borrowed. And while we have capacity to do lots of borrowing in terms of what the, the auditors would say, the rub is we don't have the ability to pay it all back. So that's, you know, we can afford a huge mortgage payment on paper, but we really can't afford it. So we're working on, you know, structuring that debt and how do we take advantage of getting to those bigger projects? How do you get to Freedom? How do you get to East Hills? So that is the, the challenge as we work forward in trying to solve this, you know, facility improvement calculus. All right, so that's what I have for this evening on our capital plan. We have a recommendation to, you know, to design and bid those listed projects for next summer for your consideration. And the floor is back to, back to the chair.
And so you see that, what you just mentioned, as 4.01 for the upcoming board meeting on November 17th would be our chance to approve the, the capital plan that you just described for this upcoming summer, not 2027 yet, but 2026.
Correct, next year.
Any questions or comments about this? Yeah.
I believe this question's appropriate for this committee, but if it's not, somebody let me know and I'll take the answer where it should be. When we look at the needs that we have and we look at the dollars that we have, we also look at the assets that we have. Do we have an up to date valuation of some of the land holdings that we have? Not saying that we need to sell anything, but I'm just curious to know.
We last received an appraisal on the property at Farmersville and Freeman's Park Avenue that's gone back several years now. I'm sure it's increased in value since then. We're also, that's the main piece of property at Buffalo Township. That might be in the 3 to 5 million dollar range.
And this probably piggybacks off our conversation from the last meeting, but I think if we're going to have a discussion about potential redistricting, some of our elementary schools are going to have that study done, I think some of this capital improvement is going to have to go hand in hand with that. And I think, you know, the question isn't, I know, Mark, you said, how do we fund this? I think some of it is, should we be funding some of this? And that's, that's going to be the question that we're going to have to ask. I mean, do we look at, you know, we have 16 elementary schools, a lot of them have a lot of land around them. Can we add on six classrooms and add a section of each class to each, to some of those? We need a new ed center. If we're going to build a new building, can we just add another floor? When you build, you know, when you're building a foundation, it doesn't cost a lot more to add another floor to a building if you're already building the foundation. You guys know this. You're doing the hard part is that, adding a second floor or a third floor. So I think those are some of the discussions we should probably be having as well into, before we decide what money we're spending, should we be spending all this money, so.
One of the conversations or considerations I'd like us to think about with both issues that we were discussing tonight is economic projections. I mean, I'm looking at slide number seven and the infrastructure and existing system investments, just in terms of stock market ups and downs. And it's usually after some kind of economic crash, crisis, like 2001, and then we saw a dip in 2003 in the, but the economic bubble of 2008. And if you, if you read any of the economic forecasting, we're looking at another dive coming in, at least. I mean, I, I don't want to be, be the, the skies falling Chicken Little, but we're look, you know, if we, if you read any of the economic forecasting that's coming up, we're looking at a potential downturn, job loss, inflation. So is, I, I'm hoping that at some point, that's also part of our magic ball considerations because this is long term investment and these hard decisions have to have that piece of information too, or at least background.
Yeah, I would see two more major pieces of information. It would be the budget, what you're talking about, the budget projections for the district budget in the near term and in the five year term and what that looks like. That's a number, we have to submit balanced budgets every year, so if we know the context of what that challenge is, what that number is, that'll help inform our decision making. And then, as I said earlier, staffing is the largest expense within that overall budget. So you align to enrollment, you have the age and location and the number of your facilities, you have the size of the budget that you have to meet, and you have staffing decisions that touch all of those things. So that, that stew that is going to have to be developed to be able to make those decisions are the interplay of all four of those areas. That's why next week at this time, we'll hear from Mr. Aristocizian to talk about long term projections, which do have economics in it. And we'll hear from Dr. Burris and the rest of the team as far as where, where our people are relative to enrollment, relative to our buildings, et cetera. But then that will take care of almost all the important pieces of information that the board will need to deliberate. And of course, there'll be some administrative recommendations to go along with that as well for your consideration.
And just one thing to add to that that came up during the previous meeting as we were talking about enrollments is to get a sense, and I know there are zillions of different ways to measure this, but the capacity of our buildings. And even seeing a couple of those different ones, because I know even in our preliminary conversations about Fountain Hill, it sounds like that's an easy number to come to, but that's actually measured a bunch of different ways to say, well, this building at the size that it is could accommodate 200 students, 400 students, 372 students. Depending on how you calculate that and what goes into that calculation, there's actually lots of different numbers that could represent the capacity of those buildings. But to get a sense for, in addition to the age and condition and the physical needs of some of those buildings, what, yeah, what the space looks like, particularly because our, our capital list includes elementary, middle, high school, it includes our administrative offices, it includes a bunch of different types of uses would also just be helpful.
We have that, we, we have a good idea what those numbers are. We didn't put that in tonight because there's no recommendation about that, just, I mean, I think the, the takeaway is based on enrollment, like the floor plan hasn't, the footprint hasn't changed in the last 20 years for the most part, but enrollment's gone down. So, you know, if you go back to enrollment way back, we have capacity and that's what we're looking at as part of those larger discussions that will be had.
And also just to call attention to this slide, which one was it? 15, the temporary facility space that again is just factoring into this timeline. If people remember when we were thinking about where we were going to put students in the midst of Fountain Hill, because that was definitely not a project, but we were going to be able to sort of keep students at the site as we were, just, you know, upgrading that building. And just to highlight, we haven't talked about it in a bit because time has moved really fast. But when we first initially proposed coming up with a temporary solution, the benefit of that temporary solution is we could use it for other things or not. We don't have to, but it is there. So just to reinforce it, this will be part of the conversation. If people had any questions about this or that process, but that's just to sort of point attention back to that too, because that's factoring into all the timing of all of these things. And that space could be utilized for some things, but probably not all things. It might be better suited for some things than other things. So again, all, all part of what we'll be thinking about. Yeah.
I just wanted to say something about just how, you know, being on, on this, in these conversations for about four years, I was so happy in reflection upon where we invested in the facilities, in the sexy HVAC systems and, and those things that have long term impacts. They are totally unsexy public investment looking things, but they are so vitally important to the sustaining building security. So I appreciate the recommendations from the, the administration and that we followed through and, and supported those recommendations. Those were not that challenging. It was, you know, oh, okay, we need to do this, we need to do that, right? But I, I would suggest, Mark, you, Mr. Stein, you had an analogy of do we fix the transmission or do we buy a new car? In my family, we are now bicycling, right? So it's, it's one of those things where we may need to see even more crimping of what we expect to be able to afford. And those are going to be hard decisions, but I think it's something that I know we have to be prepared to do it. And I want to shout out to Mr. Rashudi for being in this position when he was serving on city council and made tough decisions that have helped the city grow. So I want to, I want to just say that this is our job. And yes, we get paid in cookies, but it's worth it. Thanks.
I'll just add one commentary to that. I think the district has made really good decisions, like you said, because we could have even done the projects you just said for half the price by putting unit ventilators back where unit ventilators were. So we've taken the initiative when we do something to try to make sure we're doing it for a long term purpose. And so that's one of the things I think we have done. I agree with you about tightening our belts, but I think we also always have to make sure that we don't do something only to have to redo it sooner than it should be done. So a little bit of, of that has to be thought through and we'll, we'll raise the flag if it's going that way.
Anything else? Just to point out too, the state of facilities of public schools across the Commonwealth has received not nearly enough attention, but has been discussed. And the amount of information that this district has about its facilities and the way in which we've watched them and invested in them and we're aware of what has been fixed and what needs to be fixed, as hard as the conversations will be to have, to have the information, we're in a really, really good position. Because a lot of districts are now trying to figure out, well, how do we, how do we sort of collect this stuff and how do we get to know what it is that, that we need to do next? So just to, to point that out. And higher level budgets are a whole other thing. But, but to your point, PlanCon has disappeared, there's a lot less state support for these facility needs, so these really are falling to local communities to address. Yeah.
I'm glad that you said that because initially I didn't want this, this, our discussion session to be a whole bunch of back patting, back patting. But I'm glad that we're having this discussion because the proactivity of our predecessors has really helped us. Some of our neighboring districts and places throughout the Commonwealth are still figuring out what are they doing with century old infrastructure? You know, we don't really have that same problem en masse as other places have. You know, you have some districts out West that have the predominance of their buildings being pre-World War II buildings, pre-World War I buildings, you know? So we're, we're really in a good place for that. But I, I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're having that and I guess it is good for the public to hear and for folks to know that this is part of that process when we're stewing those dollars, when we're stewing those tax dollars, when people come up and say, well, what am I paying for? This is what you're paying for. We're paying for it to make sure that we're not putting a Band-Aid on a building that was built during, you know, the Wilson administration. That's important. That's important.
Any other questions? We'll be hearing a lot more about this. No one has done. So that gets us then, that was the one discussion item that we had. Brings us to information items. Three point oh one is the energy update.
Not to overwhelm the evening, but just to do our annual update on the energy front, just to check in, this will be much quicker. But just to take us back, thank you, Karen. So going back 14 years now, we rolled out our energy plan, identifying opportunities to save. We're using the, the Energy Star Portfolio Manager to benchmark. So a benchmark, we'll touch on that a little bit. So we've got some goals that we want to achieve and targets, and then we work towards those. And then we've been implementing this plan continually since I've been here. So this has been a focus of our efforts to make an impact here in, in Bethlehem. So what we do is we, we look at our consumption for the school year, July to June. We used to use a baseline of 2008, 2009, but we've, we've gone on a diet since then. We've gotten fitter, trimmer. So now we're using our fit and trim baseline of 18, 19. So again, talking to the stewardship, like that's our value. So as a facilities department, I'm not in a classroom teaching kids, but I am, I take it very seriously that we need to support those kids and be good stewards of limited refunds, refunds or refunds, resources we have and get that, whatever we're not using, back into the classroom. So we want to compare to our fitter, trimmer selves and strive to be better. And we compare that against that baseline. The baseline figures out the weather, because the weather really drives our energy consumption. And we're using this last school year's information. Now, more and more buildings have been getting into the program. So 14 years ago, we were competing against three or 4,000 buildings. Now we're competing against tens of thousands of other K-12 schools. So again, competition's getting tougher. We want to be the best, so we're competing against the best. Just a quick summary slide of the, our building footprint, our, the way we measure our energy is by, we take all of the electricity and the natural gas, oil. We convert it to a common unit of KBTU per square foot and we normalize that. We compare it. So the average site energy use intensity, the EUI, that's the big, that's the metric in, in the energy world. But how much energy per square foot is each facility consuming? And then we compare that against a national median on the right side. So you can see the green ones, we're below the median. Like, so we're in the top half, or I guess in this case, the bottom, right? You want to be below the median because we're using less energy per square foot. So we're down to, you know, four, four buildings right now that are currently exceeding the median. The medians are different per building, because each building is used differently. So it's pretty sophisticated, black box, EPA runs. We put our data in and it spits out, you know, our numbers. But just, you know, consolidating that information to say, all right, on the whole, 21 of our 25 buildings are above the median in terms of our energy use. So to that stewardship point, which is, and you know, Mr. Lozzy brought that up, but that's, that's important to me. And what I can bring to the, to the team is that we're, we're being good stewards with the, the limited resources that we are given.
Not to interrupt, but just a quick question. Back to slide four, the, the copy that, that.
Yes, sorry. We, we found, this afternoon, we found a, a database connection. Looked at the wrong spreadsheet. So the, the screen up here, this data is, whoop, went back too far.
Which is better.
Corrected, yes. The one before was looking at a past year that wasn't correct. So we'll correct that in the minutes. So it's the corrected. So this slide and the next one are updated. Sorry, I forgot to mention that.
That was just to see if you were paying attention. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, so just the, the benchmarking operation. So comparing ourselves to way back in eight, nine, that's our flabby selves. How much energy we used, 219 million KBTU's. You know, per square foot, that's a 78 points. We weighed 78 pounds back in 2008, nine. At our fittest, we came in at 59 pounds, right? And, you know, after last year's performance, while the energy costs have increased, our consumption per square foot, you know, we're, we're up almost two pounds on our fittest self. So, you know, we still have room to go and I'm happy to keep, keep us at our fighting weight as best we can. But we're, we're on the right side of the averages. We're doing the, the day-to-day work to be good stewards of those energy dollars.
Can I interrupt you for just a brief second? When you go back to the erroneous slide four, I'm just questioning the Transportation Department and Fountain Hill. When these numbers are calculated, the Transportation Department includes gas for all of the mileage of the buses.
Does not, no.
No.
Transportation's tough as a building. Like you want to compare against office buildings or hospitals or schools.
Because you have so many garage doors.
Our building is, it's an office building with maintenance garage that has 120 outlets for block heaters for buses. So it doesn't fit into the, a neat facility. So I'm not, like, we're trying to be responsible with how we use the energy and keep the doors closed. We use recycled oil heaters in the, in the, in the High Bay. So that number, it might be, it might vary greatly, but it's very small and it doesn't fit in the box neatly.
So it has absolutely nothing to do with the gas that we.
Nothing to do with.
Thank you.
Vehicle use.
It's more like Mark mentioned, we got toasters running every morning out there trying to heat up the block heaters in the buses to get them going.
It will count the electric buses, because that's on the meter, so potentially.
For the electric buses, you mean?
No.
Not yet. Oh, in the, in the future though. I hope we can separate those, it would be, yeah.
We can.
Yeah, that won't, that will not be part of it, sorry. Okay. We, we have, something we've been doing over, over the years that gets attention, sometimes good, sometimes bad, but we actively manage our peak load contribution over the summer. So over the years, the value of that contribution has been low. You can see going back 18, 19 through 2023, that's between, you know, 25, 55, $90,000 to go through that exercise. Last year, the value of that multiplied by four. And it's actually up another for the year after. So for, for next summer, it's actually worth $130,000. So for those, you know, 12 to 15 times we shut down over the summer, each time we do that, that's saving us 10 grand. So, you know, as much as it's, it is much maligned for those of us who are here in the summer. And again, it's a, it's a decision we make. We don't have to do it, but the value of those efforts are now five times more than they were a year ago. So just highlight the value of continuing to do that and pay attention to that, that activity. Yes.
Just back to the capital plan. I mean, if you look at that number, like that's a line item on that capital plan. It's, it's a significant effect.
Correct. So our, our electricity is like that, 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 so the, the 30% of our bill that's driven by that 5X multiplier. So our, you know, our electricity bill, I think this year we're budgeting like, I don't know, 2 million. Next year, it's, or the next two years, it's like 2.3 million. Like, nothing changes. It's simply that capacity component. So that's $300,000. That's 12% on, 15% on our electricity budget. So it's more important than ever to pay attention to that, those kind of low-hanging fruit, you know, fruit that already fell off the tree on the ground. We just pick up and, and do those things to, to capitalize.
Actually, Mark, I never thought of it this way, but what, what Director Schenkel, what you're saying is if, if we hadn't done our energy plan, we'd probably be spending $6 million instead of 3.3. So our energy plan alone is funding our capital plan. So, well said. So I think we need $3 million, because it's a $3 million savings, what I saw.
Good marketing. Just a, a touch point on solar. Again, we have the five solar arrays out there, 1.6 megawatts. It represents about, depends on the output, but you know, we'd say nine, 10%. It was seven and a half last year. We had some, some inverters go the last couple of years. So while we were paying a small premium for solar, inverters weren't working. I wasn't worried about it, because we're still saving money off the grid. This year, we're back to a break-even point on the solar versus the grid. So the, the owners of the solar are fixing their, have fixed their inverters. So I can report that, you know, currently, all the buildings are active and live and producing. Energy Star is the benchmarking process we go through. We use that as a tool. So again, there are 13,000 buildings we're competing against, where 15 years ago, there were 3,000. So the competition's tougher. I like that. We're competing against the best. We want to be the best. Of the, of the eight Energy Star schools in PA, six of them are here in Bethlehem. So we're going to keep, we're going to keep after that. And if I can make that seven, eight, nine in the future, we're going to keep doing that. Actually, it's seven. There we go. I think one just snuck in under the wire. So Brockle, Miller Heights, Nitchman, Spring Garden, Buchanan, East Hills and Lincoln. So those buildings perform better than, say, 75% of other similar buildings among those 13,000 schools across the, across the country. We fully expect in three years, after we have a year of construction, a year of occupation and bills, and then we can apply for that, I fully expect to see Fountain Hill up there. Okay, so in summary, we've got good data. We're tracking that information. We're, we're, we're comparing against our fitter, trimmer selves. And I think that's, you know, an accountability and a, a, you know, just a best practice. We don't want to compete against our flabby selves. We want to compete against the fit and trim version. So we're at seven of 22. You go back in history, we've had as many as 21 of 22 eligible. So to my mind, that is the gap I have to fill to get 21 back on that list. No one, no one starts the year looking to, you know, finish third in division. You want to win the World Series, right? You want to win the World Series. So that's our plan moving ahead. So any questions on our energy?
With the new and improved slide on slide four, one thing I noticed is that it is some of the schools that we were looking at that need, the older schools that we need to basically replace sooner rather than later are the ones that need, that are not meeting the energy budget. So that's some, that's another sort of cost to factor into those, replacing those schools. Yeah, TJ and Northeast, I guess not.
Yeah, Northeast has been a focus the last year and moving ahead. That's a big building, so that's my biggest energy hog right now.
Really?
Designed in 2003, when energy really wasn't much of a consideration, systems-wise. So we've been working to make sure that that system is operating efficiently where, how, the way it was supposed to, and the systems are working. And so that we've been, we've done a bunch of things over the last year to try and tweak that. And we're hoping to see that those numbers improve. A lot of room for improvement at Northeast. Again, big footprint, big consumer. I think this is our second biggest user after, after Liberty, actually. So that's an opportunity for improvement.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. I don't know any other facility, chief facilities officer, operations officer who manages the energy and the numbers to that degree with that amount of forecasting and data-rich analysis. So thank you. It doesn't happen without your leadership.
Any other questions about the energy update? Our next information item, three point oh two, is the Fountain Hill Elementary School Project Update.
This is just to check in that work continues. So we are still in the ground playing with stabilizing the, the shoring on Ravius Street in preparation for building our retaining wall. That's the next thrust for the next two months. Get as much of that done, if not all of it, before the, the winter hits. We do have some stormwater lines underground right now. And we've hauled out about 3,000 yards of soil, residual waste containing arsenic. That's 136 trucks rolling through Fountain Hill so far with, we still have another, that's about 15%. We have another, we did about 20, 20,000 to 25,000 yards in total. So we're, we just started, so more to get hauled out. But that is all, all proceeding every day.
Any questions about that? I don't see any other information items. So that brings us to the agenda items for November 17th, 2025, for our regular board meeting. Four point oh one, we've talked about already. That's the capital improvement plan, projects to be approved for this upcoming summer of 2026. We also touched upon four point oh two and four point oh three. Four point oh two is that bid award for the fieldhouse construction at Freedom High School. If there's anything to add there, anyone has questions about that?
Just one point, in the recommended action, there's a typo. It almost made my eyes pop out of my head. There should be a period rather than a comma, the 700 and.
Oh goodness.
Yeah, I, I was like, I don't think that, that's just, just a typo.
It's going to be quite a fieldhouse. Get ready.
This is in Texas here, sorry.
Four point oh three is the temporary emergency transfer switch rental for Freedom High School.
That was work that was already performed. We had to rent a temporary one to keep the building. See if in case of power outage, the, it took a lot longer to get the switch than anticipated and the rental added up. We just got it done in October, but the rental exceeded the, the bid limit for the emergency work. So it requires board approval, so it's an after-the-fact approval.
Any questions? And the last one, four point oh four, is the fuel oil participation with Colonial Intermediate Unit, 20, the joint purchasing board for the '26, '27 school year.
That is just the IU's going out in the, in the winter to get some prices for our fuel oil needs for the following year. And that's just setting us up to participate.
Any questions or concerns about any of those showing up on the agenda? All right, well, then that brings us back to courtesy of the floor. Anything about any items? All right, then we've got open forum. Anything for the board? Yep.
Brief exec session for personnel.
Anything else? If nothing, that brings us to adjournment.